We'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Assistant's trustee Swanson, if you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
What do I do?
At this time, we can have public comments, there's three minutes per person, and you can also talk on each agenda item. Are there any public comments? If you would give your name and if you're a township resident or not.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. So, Tadweiser, 610 North Miami, just happy to be here once in a while when it doesn't conflict with the Labor Council meetings, but I wanted to, when they heard I was coming, the leaders of Ypsilanti and the Ytown ARPA Committee, Alex and Alicia, weren't able to come, but just wanted me to share that they're planning soon to get in touch with the ARPA Committee folks with results from the door knocking and the online survey that they've done, so just expect to hear from them soon. And glad to be back.
Any other public comment?
My name is Arloa Kaiser, live at 1421 Melvin Street, and this is kind of an update. I want to thank Shawna and Mike for the paper shredding on Saturday, and also the street business that they're doing with the pipeline and that on the corner of Margarita and Grove Street, and if anybody wants to see it, I have some pictures right in the middle of the sidewalk. Here was this mess of wires, and I came here and talked to Jane in OCS to see if she could get someone to deal with it, because I waited at least a week before I went to see if they were going to get rid of them, so that no one tripped on the sidewalk, got caught in these wires. And so I waited a week, went back to her, she said she had reached out to them, and no one responded to her. So, they were working on Grove, so I walked over and asked for the guy in charge, and his name was Brent Williams from Miller Pipeline, and he had been on the excavator thing, and he said by the end of the day, he would go down and fix it, and he did.
Oh, good.
Which I really appreciate it. I don't know if there are more of those other places in the neighborhood, but this was right on Grove where so many people traveled. And Monday, yesterday, they actually had two street sweepers, one behind the other, and really did a good job on my street, so I'm assuming if they did there, they did other places too. And people have complained about Grove Road and the police not making stops and that kind of thing. Well, let's see what day it was. It was either Sunday or yesterday morning. I was walking along Grove between the cliffs and whatever that other strip of offices is. They had one stop there, and by the time I walked to the cliffs, they had another car stopped. So they are doing what they're supposed to. I guess just other people don't see that they do make stops, and I just want to thank the board for everything that you do for us, because most of us don't see what you do behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. The first item on the agenda is a consent agenda, which are the minutes of the April 19th work session and regular meeting.
So move.
I'm sorry, I was going to say statements and checks and the treasures report as well. My apologies.
So move.
Motion, Jill Rowe, support Peterson to approve the consent agenda. Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Attorney report, general legal update, Mr. Winters?
Madam Chair, I know the audience is not, we've got nice three people this evening to hear this report, and the board itself, and I debated as to how much to go into detail, but I think from the standpoint of just for my own peace of mind, back in January, I had indicated that January was starting out the way that the 2022 year had ended with a lot of moving pieces, and it's done nothing but accelerate since that time period. And I can't go through everything, and nor should I go through everything this evening, but I will give maybe some of the points I'm referring to. For the third time since March 22nd, there's been three lawsuits filed against our township clerk by this ballot committee who calls themselves Ypsilanti Township Citizens for Responsible Government. This ballot committee started out trying to have a referendum to block the adoption of the IC district where we had, as a board designated, or the board had designated, where recreational marijuana businesses and medical marijuana could be located. The problem with their referendum request is that they were short by a significant number of the qualified electors that were needed in order to place that referendum on the ballot. So they then proceeded to file a second federal lawsuit a week or so ago, in which they seeking to actually place on the ballot a vote that would prohibit marijuana businesses townshipwide. That lawsuit required, well, it came about because they had failed to garner 5% of the qualified electors who voted in the last gubernatorial election, and so they again fell short of the 5% in the second federal lawsuit. The first one required 15% in order to have a referendum vote. The second effort was a 5% threshold, they failed to meet that threshold, and many people that signed the petitions were not township residents, were not registered voters, any number of reasons why they were disqualified, all legitimate. And so, on top of those two federal lawsuits, we've now been served with another lawsuit in the Washtenaw County Circuit Court, seeking to force the county clerk and this township clerk to place on the ballot this vote to prohibit marijuana businesses in the township and to ignore the 5% requirement altogether. In other words, even though they helped write the laws that we now live with, they don't want the township clerk to do her job of trying to confirm that the signatures, in fact, that are turned in, meet the 5% threshold. So there's three different lawsuits going on right now by this group who calls themselves Citizens for Responsible Government. You may have seen the article that was in the NRB News, M Live, which they indicated that there's a very shadowy organization that's flooded $125,000 into this campaign to try and confuse voters, and the reality of it is, they really have their own agenda themselves. My point is that there's been a tremendous amount of time and effort expended just on this issue by itself. We've had three different lawsuits filed, none of which really, in my opinion, is meritorious because they don't meet the minimum threshold level to have any issue voted upon by township voters. And of course, when these kinds of petitions come in, whether it's Clerk Rowe and Deputy Clerk Stanfield and NISTF, Treasurer's Office helping in, it just takes away a tremendous amount of time and energy and resources to try and deal with this, because it has to be done. And again, we have another hearing on May 27th in regards to this writ of mandamus seeking to order Clerk Rowe to do something which she legally cannot do, and that is to certify a proposal to the county when her determination has been that the 5% threshold was not met by the circulators of these petitions. That's just one issue by itself that's taken a great deal of time. On a different note, my law partner is continuing to gather documentation in regards to Galt Village, to ask the court to order that shopping center that's vacant to be demolished. It has been declared to be a public nuisance, going back to 2016. Six years is long enough for anyone to come up with a reasonable plan to rehabilitate. That's not going to occur. This past weekend, I was driving by there, and there was at least one food truck in the parking lot along with an RV, and I know that all of you go to neighborhood watching meetings over there in the Galt Village, and that continues to be a very, you know, ongoing, and rightfully so, issue with the Galt Village as to what are we going to do about that vacant building. It recently came to light by the ordinance officers that they found evidence that some people were in there squatting, there were mattresses, the boards had been ripped apart, evidence of people actually living there, and this is not going to end well if we don't do something. So we're going to ask the court to order the owner to demolish the vacant building, and we'll also ask the court, if he fails to do so, to at least grant the township the option, not the mandate, to demolish the building and place a judgment lien on the property, similar to what was done for Liberty Square and what was also done for Ypsilanti Mobile Village and other two parks, when they had to be demolished and removed because they were public nuisances. Aspen Chase is, and the Villas over here, this is where McKelley Properties did install the security cameras, and they also installed the license plate reader, and I talked to Jim Fink today. The Villas, right now, is three-fourths operational from the standpoint of the security cameras and the license plate reader. They have been installed in their entirety at Aspen Chase, and the sheriff's deputies have been trained to utilize the new security camera system and the license plate reader, so that is up and running in regards to Aspen Chase. Deputies have been trained on that system and can access it 24/7. At the same time, the Villas, which is the apartment complex located next to Aspen Chase, has three-fourths of their new security camera system in place. So we'll find out in the months ahead as to what an impact that may have in regards to certain activities that have occurred over there, which have resulted in over 2,000 calls for service over a very, very defined period of time. In regards to Little Feather Park, this is the park that has been under renovation pursuant to a grant from the Michigan Department Natural Resource Trust Fund and the township. It has been delayed. I talked to Mike Hoffmeister again this evening. I've been in contact with the bonding company for the contractor in regards to, this has to be completed. My hope is that it will be completed in time for Memorial Day opening. That's the traditional beginning of the summer months where people want to get out and use the parks. It's a beautiful park, it has the views of the Ford Lake, has just a beautiful setting. It does not appear it's going to be completed in time to be utilized for the Memorial Day weekend, and I'm looking for a specific number tomorrow as to a date in which that's going to be either completed, or else we'll proceed to have the bond called in and have it completed through the proceeds from the performance bond. So, I'll stop right there, only because I could go on for another probably, you know, a couple hours probably, and that's not really what you're here for. But just to give everybody kind of at least a sense as to what is going on, I know you get the letters, it tries to at least summarize some of the things I spoke about this evening, but just for the trustees' benefit especially, the township's full-time officials and staff and many other people are just constantly, every day, being inundated with a variety of difficult issues, and I don't think until, it'd be kind of nice one sometimes just to tag along with the full-time officials for a week and just see what actually goes on in this building on a daily basis. I think Clerk Rowe and Trustee Eldridge were trustees, they could see a lot of things, but being here every day, I think, has been quite a high opener even for them in regards to how much is being brought to, brought to bear by residents and non-residents alike in regards to the daily activities. And I think it gets a little bit wearisome, and I think it gets tiresome, and I think we have a job to do to try to do our best, but I'm just highlighting this again because we're now going into June pretty soon, and it doesn't seem that long ago, we were talking in January, like we just had to figure out a different way of doing things, but I haven't been able to figure that out yet in terms of how to slow down this train. But anyways, we'll keep on doing what we have to do, and I guess we'll keep on defending lawsuits, whether they're frivolous or not, and at some point in time, maybe we'll get the attention of the judge to start imposing sanctions and court costs and actual attorney fees for having to defend cases that absolutely should have never been filed to begin with. I've never taken issue with anybody to file a lawsuit if there's a legitimate area of disagreement. Not everybody sees the world the same way, that's why you have courts to be an arbiter to decide who's right, who's wrong, what's fair, what's not fair, what's legal, what's not legal. But when a statute says you have to have 15% before you can go to the next level of a vote, and you fall short, and then you file a lawsuit anyways, I have a problem with it. When it says you have to have 5% to go to a ballot vote on whether you can prohibit marijuana, and you fall short of that because you're counting, because you're including people in your petitions that are not registered, don't live in the township, don't, wrong addresses, and you file a lawsuit, I have a problem with that, from a legal, as an attorney to another attorney. It's just, you know, deeding myself, but during the 40-plus years, I have never filed a suit that I think, that I know has been a frivolous lawsuit, just hoping that somehow that would lead to somebody negotiating a result, because I failed to do what I, as an attorney, or as a client, as an attorney on behalf of a client, failed to do. So, you've got to keep on doing the right thing, and no matter how thankless at times it is, I'm very, very proud of the township officials and all of you for continuing to do your jobs, but it's just not, at times, as glamorous, and it's certainly not as fun sometimes as people think it is in terms of seeing things happen on a day-in, day-out basis, but all we can do is keep on going forward, and hopefully at some point in time, it'll be January again, and we may be having the same conversation that we did last January, but in the meantime, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody for all your support, because I know I bother people on the weekends sometimes, and I apologize for that too. But sometimes, there's so much going across our desk that, you know, you have to be available to bounce ideas off people, because otherwise, you know, it's, all of us together usually make a better decision than just one of us on our own do it. And that's why sometimes you will get phone calls over the weekend asking for your input and advice, because decisions have to be made pretty quickly. So, that concludes my report. If there's any questions.
Any questions or comment?
I am glad that we're asking Galt Village to demolish it, because they have done zero, and we continue to have it boarded up, and it's just, I know the residents are frustrated, I know the township is frustrated too, but he needs to be held accountable for that building, and six years is long enough. So I hope we can prevail in court like we did. I know a lot of times, we have to give them an opportunity to do it, and I think legal counsel has done that.
It's a very sad situation.
It is, yeah.
Drive by the area, it's a very, very vibrant neighborhood, and they deserve to have something that can be a commercial-based business or different businesses, and to have that just sitting there, an ICE or attractive nuisance, invitation for criminal activity, people squatting inside the building, not to mention the safety issues if a fire breaks out, to our own fire, all of our first responders, something has to give, and it just can't continue to go on the way that it is.
Thank you. Under new business, we have requests to authorize Circuit Court litigation to abate a public nuisance that is located at 6630 Rossenville Road, which is budgeted.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion by Clerk Rowe, supported by Treasurer Eldridge, to approve the request. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is request to authorize Circuit Court litigation to abate public nuisances by padlocking at 1028 Studebaker, 599 Kennedy, and 1405 Bud.
So move.
Support.
Motion, Jill Rowe, support trustee Wilson. Questions or comment on that? I know the residents will be happy with this being addressed, it's been a long time issues in the neighborhood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number three is a request to approve the master agreement for municipal street lighting with DTE for streetlights for the Huron Street pathway in the amount of $97,063, which is budgeted, contingent upon approval of the budget amendment.
So move.
Support.
Motion, Peterson, support Eldridge. Questions or comments? This is to light up the second part of Huron Street in the joint partnership with the city of Ypsilanti and this bridge, non-motorized path that'll go all the way from the city of Ypsilanti to Huron River Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carrying. Number four is a request to approve change order number one for the Huron Street Trail Project in the amount of $6,000, which is budgeted.
So move.
Support.
Motion, Jill Rowe, support Eldridge. This is for the non-motorized path on Huron Street, and it is for inspection fee of $6,000 for the road commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five is a request to approve a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for construction on Highway M-17, Washtenaw Avenue, Hamilton, Huron Street, and Highway US-12 Bridge, Michigan Avenue, in the amount of $62,100, which is budgeted, contingent upon the approval of the budget amendment.
So move, Peterson. Support. Jill Rowe.
Motion in support. This project was going, we didn't think it was going to happen, because the project came in $2 million over anticipated engineering costs, but thanks to the work of our state representative and MDOT and the state of Michigan is going to proceed with this project. The only part in the township is the Huron Bridge. The title of the entire project includes a lot of other streets in the city of Ypsilanti, but our portion is only the bridge part of it, and that will have street lighting and a non-motorized path.
Questions are coming? Mr. Winters, have you reviewed the agreement, or will it be contingent upon that?
I reviewed these both agreements. The one I meant to mention, I'm sorry, the one on the DTE, we should have a provision in there that we're not waiving our rights for governmental immunity like we always have in that paragraph, or the one you disapproved, that was something I meant to bring up during the work session, if I could just go back for a second, just bring that to your attention. There was a street lighting agreement.
Sometimes they change amendments.
Specifically, it's on paragraph 15, waiver limitation liability. We always put in there that nothing in this waiver or limitation should be construed to waive our right to, the governmental immunity defense, that's something we've always put in the contract, that's the one that we disapproved. In regards to the one with MDOT, it's a pretty much a boilerplate contract that they use for all their projects, and I don't think right now, there's anything I would change in the contract per se. In regards to the actual dollar amount, I'm assuming that that's been vetted by all of you in terms of the specific dollars that go into the contract, but in terms of the contract itself, it'd be in proper form to go forward.
So the DTE just went?
It was actually paragraph 15 of the DTE contract where we put in that standard language that we're not waiving our right for governmental immunity. I can give the exact language to Clerk Rowe after we get to the board meeting.
So, Madam Chair, us moved in support under contingency of your attorney to review. Is that correct?
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
They had a new person in the, that's probably how it got.
No, you should have did.
Sometimes people, we don't approve anything without the attorney's approval, and we're very thankful for the thoroughness of it, because it does, it's important, not only, I mean, all businesses run everything by their township, not their township, but their corporate lawyers, and we do the same thing, and I think it's a good practice for government to do, just to make sure that our taxpayers are protected, and that you have a good attorney that can make sure that happens.
Thank you for that, Mr. Winters. We have a motion in support with a friendly amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six, a request to approve the second agreement with Washtenaw County Road Commission for road improvements in the amount of $207,500, contingent upon approval of the budget amendment.
So move.
Support.
So, some of the roads that were going to be improved was Mansfield, Andrea, Lakeview, Rolling Court, and we expect a possible third agreement as well to come back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number seven is Resolution 2022-06, temporary road closure request for Oberon 5K on July, what?
29th.
On July 29th.
Oh, I see there.
Okay.
I have Resolution Number 2022-06, a resolution regarding a temporary road closure. Resolution authorizing the temporary road closure of Merritt between Munger and Stony Creek for runners to cross Merritt at Wired's Orchard and entering into Rolling Hills on Friday, July 29th, 2022, from 6:30 PM to 7:15 PM for the Oberon 5K to benefit the Huron Waterloo pathways. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees has approved the temporary road closure with the Ypsilanti Township roads as indicated above, and whereas the driveways, banners, and parades act 200 of 1969 requires the township to authorize an official designated by resolution to make such a request from the road commission, now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees designates and agrees that Randall Step, owner RF Events, be authorized official designee in this instance when the application is made to the Washtenaw County Road Commission for this temporary road closure. I would so move the resolution.
Motion, Jill Rowe.
Support.
Support, Wilson. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We do these resolutions every year. The next one, item eight, is Resolution 2022-07, temporary road closure request for Run, Scream Run, 510K, and Kids Mile Run on October 8th, 2022.
I have Resolution 2022-07, a resolution regarding temporary road closure. Resolution authorizing the temporary road closure of Merritt Road between Munger and Stony Creek for runners to cross Merritt Road at Wyers Orchard on Saturday, October 8th, 2022, from 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM for the Run, Scream Run, 5K, 10K, and Kids Mile. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees has approved the temporary road closure of Ypsilanti Township roads as indicated above, and whereas the driveways, banners, and parades Act 200 of 1969 requires that the township authorize an official designated by resolution to make such a request from the road commission, now therefore be resolved that Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees designates and agrees that Randall Step, owner RF Events, may be authorized as the official designee in this instance when the application is made to the Washtenaw County Road Commission for this temporary road closure. I'd so move the resolution.
Motion, Gerald Rose?
Support.
Support Eldridge to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number nine is budget amendment number seven. Clerk Gerald Rose?
I have a motion to amend the 2022 budget, number seven. Move to increase the general fund by $209,455 to $10,453,778 and improve the department line item changes as outlined. I'd move to increase the BSR 2 budget by $119,617 to $2,098,329 and improve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the recreation fund budget by $5,000 to $713,900 and approve the department line item changes as outlined. And move to increase the 2006 bond fund budget by $50 to $233,840 and approve the line item changes as outlined. I would so move the budget amendment.
Motion, Gerald Rose?
Support.
Support, Wilson? Questions are coming? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Authorization bends, we have the request to accept the website development proposal from revised for a five-year agreement in the amount of $52,100, which is budgeted, contingent upon attorney review and approval.
So move.
Motion, Gerald Rose?
Support.
Support, Wilson? We discussed a lot of things in the work session on this and will be addressed. And Travis is getting answers to some of the questions that were asked. Hopefully, we'll be able to move with the website redesign and really make our website better than it's ever been. And we'll all look forward to that. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Request approval to seek sealed bids for four new ordinance and zoning vehicles, it will be brought back to the board.
So move.
Support.
Motion, Gerald Rose, support Eldridge. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's no other business, so a motion to adjourn would be in.
So moved. Support.
Motion Eldridge, I mean, motion, Wilson, support Eldridge to adjourn at 7:35. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.